It being sometime just about 7:00 PM, the Foxborough Planning Board meeting will come to order. First item is just the planner's report, if you don't mind Paige.
Sure. As you all know, we have our town meeting coming up on November 15th. So this week, we started to formulate our plan moving forward. It looks like this Monday night Barney and I will be meeting with our AdCom liaison to talk about all the zoning articles. And then Wednesday night, we'll be going in front of the full AdCom to present to them. So, and then our next meeting, October 14th, we'll be holding the public hearings on those matters. And just for the reminder, it's outdoor dining, amending the accessory apartment by adding a site plan review waiver for the Uptown area. Change the definite, well, get rid of the word stories when it refers to height, define habitable floor area, and amend the definition of brew pub. So anybody who's interested should plan on tuning in on October 14th for our public hearings.
Paige, is that a single public hearing?
No, it's many.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and then this past week or two, I've been pretty much obsessively working on the RFP for Walnut Street. It's scheduled to be out on Monday, so we're trying to, it's almost done today, got a few final tweaks. We've been finalizing it with procurement and legal, and we're about to go. So that's a big deal for the town, so stay tuned on that. 119 Moore Street, the 40B, I'm not sure if you all heard, but the selectmen ultimately voted to support the general concept of the project with many caveats and conditions, but in general, supported the need for affordable housing in Foxborough. And at this point, it now goes to the state. They issue something called a site eligibility letter, or a project eligibility letter. That's probably going to take a couple months, I would imagine. And at that point, only if they get that letter and are deemed eligible, would they then be eligible to apply to the zoning board. And at that point, they'd apply to the zoning board, and that, you know, they will open public hearings. Usually these projects take months of review, and that's when the detailed, all the things that were very hard not to talk about at the selectman level, that's when all the details will be looked into. And the ZBA has the ability to hire consultants and really dig deep, and I mean that literally, into sort of any of the issues that were addressed and are concerned.
So just to clarify on that eligibility letter?
Yes.
And you may or may not know, I'm still a little bit hazy.
We all are.
In other words, at least is it your understanding that they could not even make that application to the ZBA unless they get that letter? Or is that for the favorable finance portion?
No, no. No, they have to get a letter. You cannot apply to the town without a letter from, without this project eligibility letter from the state. Now that said, I'm not sure, I'd have to dig a little deeper into what those criteria is, but we all know that affordable housing is top on the state's priority list, so, you know, my hunch is, is the folks that are applying for this have a good idea of what will get approved. So I'm assuming it would get through the state, but I have no idea. I would have to look at that. So I wouldn't be surprised if it did, but you just don't know. So that's coming up. So again, we're, I was talking with the chair of the ZBA, and you know, he's looking ahead months at this point before it would be on their table sometime in the winter. The local rapid recovery program, that's the Uptown work that we got a grant for from the state. That, and I mentioned last time, that we're struggling to pull together a quick grant. So we're looking at the Central Street parking lot, both some logistical issues of working with stakeholders, and then also maybe prettying it up a little bit. So we are pulling that together. That's due by the 30th, although I think I have to have that in Monday, but I can't worry about that until the RFP's out, so, you know, we're doing that. Mass Gaming Commission and the Regional Tourism Grant, I haven't done those two grants yet. I'm going to get to them, but obviously aforementioned issues. Town Hall Training, tomorrow morning, the town hall will be closed. I think it said 8:30 to 11:00. We're doing something called Alert Lockdown Inform Counter and Evacuate Training, which is, we call this active shooter training. So I guess we are being trained on what to do if something bad happens, which is sad, but I guess good to know.
They do it in the school?
Yeah, our kids know, so I guess the grownups should too. It's a shame. But we are going to be doing that. I believe our police chief highly recommended that exercise, so just FYI. We are going to be open from 11:00 to 12:30 to the public, because we understand it's Friday, and you know, if someone has to get in and do anything. And if there's any emergencies, I think they said to call, something like that. And then Cultural District, we, last week I met with some members of the Cultural Commission over at the Marilyn Rodman Performing Arts Center, and started talking about creating a cultural district uptown. That will make us eligible for grants, and really start to create, as you know, I'm always talking about, we're drawing folks uptown, but we also need to make sure they have something to do. So when you start adding cultural, or maybe some activities that are sort of low-key culturally significant, then that can give children and, you know, visitors, things to do uptown. So we're looking at creating that. I can't take the lead on that, so, but I think the Cultural Commission's interested in doing that, so that'll be great. And then two things I forgot to put on my report, but I put in my email, is that we are heartbroken to learn that Norm, our inspecting engineer, is retiring effective November 30th. So that's a big loss.
Mandatory age of 90, you have to.
Norm, I don't know how long Norm's been with us, Gabby.
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years Norm's been with us as an engineer, and he's really served the town well, and so we have to come up with a strategy on how to replace him. You know, he's also been extremely reasonable in his pricing for us, and just really represented the community well. So it's going to be tough shoes to fill. But he, I don't know how old he is.
He's 86.
Eighty-six.
Oh, God, you're old.
So we figure, you know, we kind of got to...
He's a very, very spry 86.
Yeah. And he's not retiring, from what it sounds like, for any health or reasons, it's just more of the tax, you know, if you work past November 30th, it goes into the next year, and it's just more of a tax burden, I think. It's not even that he's not physically able to.
So if we find a replacement, will Norm pass his vest on to him?
We might have to get a new vest, you know? That one's probably pretty old. So that, we'll be getting to that soon. We have to work on that quickly. And then lastly, just a reminder that Tuesday night, you're scheduled to meet with the Board of Selectmen to jointly appoint an associate member. I know Gary was hoping that a majority would be there, because he has another commitment. So are the other four of you think you'll be able to go?
Tuesday?
Three of you?
I guess three enough.
Yeah, three's enough. And don't remember, and don't forget, Zoom's an option, so if you can't be here in person, you can Zoom in. So, that's all I have.
So on that, Kevin, you would actually need to open a meeting up to board.
Yes, we would have to.
So, anything on...
Thanks, wait a minute, I'm sorry, but thanks to Diana, we can have that meeting, because today she reminds, she's out tomorrow, and all of a sudden she said something about posting said meeting. Never would have given that a thought. Ask Gabby, she wouldn't have either. So thank you Diana, because you would have shown up at the meeting, it wouldn't have been posted, and we wouldn't have looked good, so. She saved us.
Anything under our active subdivisions, Cam?
No.
Okay. And there's some minutes that need to be?
I sent them out yesterday, so they, fresh in everybody's mind.
Make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have to recuse, I did not attend the meeting. And it being just a little past 7:05, we have a request for a change of use waiver at 46 Central Street by Kerry Vogler for Sweetness and Honey Bakery.
So I'll just introduce this. We heard through the grapevine that we had a bakery coming to town, and actually Ron was all over that, to make sure that, as you know, hopefully this will change at town meeting, but right now, anything that happens uptown or anywhere, if there's a change of use, it does require Planning Board Site Plan Review or a waiver. We're going forward to a town meeting to suggest that a town adopt a bylaw that doesn't require it when you're not changing anything. Kerry's not planning any external changes to the building, there's not changes to parking or drainage, or anything that Site Plan Review would cover. So it's really a rubber stamp for you guys, as you know. But Ron was very, wanted to make sure that there were no snafus down the road with any surprise red tape. You know, we think the bylaw will pass, but in case it doesn't, we want to make sure we get a bakery uptown. So I'll pass it over to Kerry, but I just wanted to set that framework, that you just would be waiving Site Plan Review, because there's nothing to review.
Thanks Paige.
Hi. Like she said, I'm looking to open a bakery at 46 Central Street in Foxborough. I've been doing it out of my house for a year and a half, working with the Health Department on a residential kitchen, license and permits that I can do it. We are moving forward to get a storefront, which I'm very excited about. I'm hoping that you guys are also excited for it. It sounds like the town is, but I want to make sure, you know, I'm covering all my bases, filling out all required permits and anything. Paige has been super helpful, so I appreciate her and you guys. So do you have any questions for me?
What types of internal modifications are you envisioning, or do you need to make?
Yep, so it was previously an insurance agency, so we plan to change the back room into a kitchen, so we will need to pull an electrical permit to move and add some outlets, stuff like that, so that things can plug in. A plumber's going to have to come in to do some work, so that way I can have a three-bay sink that's required, the grease trap, all of that, and make it so that ovens can also be in there, because I plan to cook on, on space.
Good.
So, and new flooring, painting, small stuff like that.
Is there currently a rear entrance?
Yes, there is a back door and a front door.
And I assume you'll be doing deliveries from the rear?
Um, yes. Yep, there's a parking lot next to it, so it should be pretty easy.
People have been clamoring in this town for a bakery for generations, so, you know...
That's good.
Oh, they have, over years.
Can you make a good cannoli?
I'm going to work on it, it's on my list.
My wife will be your best friend.
Good to know. Not the first to suggest that, so if anyone has suggestions, feel free to send me an email and stuff.
Jeff would, Jeff, that's my ex-husband, Alex would be right there with her. He's from Jersey, so he cannot find any good cannolis around here.
Right now, you have to drive to Gharino's.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
No, you can go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, then I'd make a motion that we waive Site Plan approval on a change of use at 46 Central Street for the Sweetness and Honey Bakery.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Very much good luck.
Best of luck, folks.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, everyone. Great night.
Okay. It being just slightly past 7:10 PM, we have an informal discussion for a proposed one-lot subdivision at 42 Spring Street.
Roger, I'm Juki Warner.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Give you some maps.
Thank you.
Just a reference. Not too complicated, I assure you.
Sir?
Trying to keep it simple. We have a family lot on now 42 Spring Street. We had 40 Spring Street as a residence since the early 60s. My parents had that, and we raised, I'm one of four children that were raised in town here. That property had been sold after I graduated from high school, which happens...
You can tell them when.
Seventy-seven, Jeff. So we moved out of town at that time, so my parents moved to Florida and retired. They have both since passed, and right next to that 40 Spring Street, there's a vacant lot that's been sitting empty. It's 1.66 acres.
And they purchased that back, back in 1961?
Nineteen sixty.
Okay.
So that...
It's been sitting vacant since then.
So we've decided that we should try to pursue some opportunity to try to come back to town and build a single residence there that Roger and I will be sharing. We have a engineer in Mansfield that kind of did a preliminary planning, and we just wanted a preliminary review to see if that's something that you guys would agree with, and we can move forward to get a, you know, obviously more detailed layout of the lot.
Our understanding is that the frontage requirement is 200 feet in this zoning area, and as you can see from the map, it's 125 on this, but the engineer's proposal would be to do a private road. It's not, it's a large piece of property, it's over an acre and a half, but it doesn't have that 200 feet of frontage on it.
This is our 40?
Yep.
Yeah, it's our 40, it's the region, yeah.
So his proposal was to put in a private road that we could access the property from, which would give us that, that frontage.
And it's deep, it's a deep, deep piece of property, so the house could be set way back and still have access.
So is he actually proposing the shown cul-de-sac?
Correct.
Yes.
But would you build it, or would you be seeking waivers?
We would do that, we'd do that ourselves. It would be a private road, so we would be able to...
So can I ask first, have you reviewed this at all with the applicant?
We did meet with them informally, and basically, it's more up to you guys again, on this, sort of what you think of, that you're going to allow.
We're trying to assess how feasible this is before we move ahead and get more engineering done. We've had it surveyed, we've had the engineer come up with a...
Preliminary plan.
A preliminary idea of what could work.
Right.
In building the cul-de-sac, would that give you the required frontage you'd need on?
Yes, that's, that's his proposal.
And the cul-de-sac, while there's no dimension on it, but visually, it appears to meet what would be required for the turn-in ready safety vehicles.
I mean, it's 50 feet in width, I don't know the, the size of this...
Well, if the lot's 125, and it's 50 on the roadway, then that cul-de-sac's got to be over 85.
Well, the requirement is 110.
Okay.
So that's pretty close.
So, it looks like it's... Could still, yeah.
He could still, yeah.
Right.
So before we get, you know, obviously, the perk test and layout as to where the house could be, and make sure we have the distance that is appropriate based upon the area. I'm familiar with the neighbors, I'm still very friendly with Jim and Diane Murphy. They're coming anytime we need them as well. We do, you know, have friendly folks around the neighborhood that I'm still very friendly with, so I've talked to them.
So that last sheet is...
That was the original.
No, the last sheet.
Oh, that one, yep, that was, we just had to assign the number, 42 Spring.
Okay, okay.
But for some reason, that lot wasn't given a separate number, even though it was a separate, separate lot, so we just, we had to work that out to get the...
The number assigned.
42 Spring Street rather than 40.
But where Murphy Lane is, these are all as, as currently exist?
Correct.
Yep.
Yep, yep.
And you, either you or someone in the past had been to the zoning board, and you couldn't meet the test there.
I don't know about zoning board, we tried to do variance.
Yes, that would be, that would be the zoning board. That was, that was quite some time. Yeah, it was some time ago.
Long time ago, yeah.
But they're very strict, so I understand that.
Kevin?
Yeah.
That was for-fronted?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
What year was that?
It was in 1997.
So that's quite a long time ago.
And it's just been, like I say, taxes on it, it was like $400 a year, that's all we're paying on that, so, I mean...
Oh, that will change.
I know, well, we're willing to, if we can do.
That's okay with us.
That's okay. I mean, we want to put a single-family residence, there's nothing subdivided.
We don't want to subdivide the lot, we just want to put one house on it, we don't want to make multiple lots or anything like that.
Do you own 40?
Not any longer, no.
So have you priced out, so to build this cul-de-sac, have you looked at, has your engineer given you any estimate of the costs and all that above?
Not yet.
Nope.
No, we wanted to get through this thing.
So there's a chance, I mean, there's a chance that your engineer is also thinking that you would be seeking some waivers to make it maybe smaller, I would think.
I don't know that.
Yeah, we don't know.
Well, my fear is, I'm just, I mean, you know, I just don't want to go down this road, is like, you might get the cost estimate for this road and find that it's, you know, over 100, I don't even know, I mean, a lot of money. So I just want you to be aware of that, and then, you know, typically, we get waiver requests to bring it down, because it's just one lot. I personally don't like that, as you know, I've told you that, but I do want to be frank and have a frank discussion, so you don't walk away and go to your engineer and have him go, "You were supposed to find out about the waivers," or something to that effect.
Well, I think the only thing that he was concerned about is like drainage, and like culverts, and stuff like that. It's a private road, we didn't think that that was viable.
Right. But if you're putting that much pavement, you might have to.
Right, because you still have to control your runoff.
And often with private roads like this, we get asked to waive lighting and sidewalks and stuff like that. So, you know, right now, it sounds like you're requesting just a regular cul-de-sac with no waivers.
And that would be by right, you could do that by right.
You could do that without our approval.
But it would probably cost you a pretty penny.
Okay.
I mean, I don't even know, you guys might know better than me, but, you know...
Only over 100.
I mean, Bill Buckley said that cul-de-sac on Orchard Place would be 84 feet across in pavement, so I just imagine with the cost of everything, that would be, you know, and then what do we do, like 18 to 22 feet or something, like 18 feet? So 18 feet of pavement, and then, so it's a lot. That's, my fear is, is that you might be getting in over your head, and you might want to look at, I mean...
The waivers, would the process of just getting it reviewed again?
Well, you'd be going through the same process, but the board would waive the construction standards, and you basically build a glorified driveway.
This is the board that will go to waivers this time, not the zoning board.
Right, you'd come to us, okay.
Kind of what just happened at Orchard Place, and that was sort of that whole thing. Now again, it's not something we want, but I don't want to have a whole conversation and then waste time.
Well, I think, I think it's a matter of finding out from your engineer about how it's going to cost, about how much this is going to cost, because as Paige said, you can build this by right. You don't need our approval in any way.
They need approval, but just your sign, you can't deny it.
It's just our sign, we can't deny it. You can build this with, exactly with no waivers, just with our signature. But I think it, getting, my recommendation to you would be to get a price estimate, because you may be blown out of the water by the amount of money. And then it's a matter of how to, you know, our willingness and an open discussion with both of you about the waivers that would be needed.
Well, I mean, we could show them examples of other projects, and the other engineer, and I guess the question is for the board, how do you feel about them going down that path? Now, the other thing we should mention is, if you build a by-right subdivision, as it's called, with all the standards, then you could seek to have the town accept it. And then it wouldn't be a private road. That said, we don't like that.
You don't like it?
So that's, so that's an expensive route, and then the town ends up having to maintain it, so it's kind of an expensive route. But that said, I do hate these projects, so I can't, I make my own case against myself.
I mean, it is a 1.6 acre lot.
Right.
I mean, the depth of it is staggering. And, I mean, it's one thing on Murphy Lane, where different lots are pulling frontage off it, you know?
Correct.
That clearly has to be an accepted road, you know?
Yeah, that does.
It's a private road.
That's a private road.
But it's a built cul-de-sac.
Right.
And was it built waivers?
Must have been.
Yeah, I'm sure that there must have been. I don't, it was, it was before I was here, but I imagine that, that there were some things that were waived so that it would stay private.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And in terms of that frontage, is that hard and fast, that, that 200 feet, or is there any chance of getting waivers to be allowed?
That would be the zoning, and they already, they already declined it.
Yeah, but, see, I can tell, you know, it is a little bit obtuse, but what you would need to do, and you've kind of, you're kind of doing it already in an informal way, you know, what we just talked about with Gabby, is that it seems pretty clear that you can build this, you know? And that sort of, whenever the board would entertain any kind of waivers from those standards, we would, protocol dictates and policy dictates that we would first need to be assured that, hey, we could say we're not going to give you any waivers, and you could say, well, tough, I'll build it just conventionally. And it, it looks pretty clear, like you can do that. So then it comes to the board, you know, would, in our eyes, would we consider it to be in the town's best interest, or the neighborhood's best interest, for you to go ahead and build that? And, you know, different people have different views on that. Probably not, maybe not, you know? So that's kind of what we're talking about here, between the lines.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And that's a good thing that you came in informally to kind of...
Yeah, just get into discussion, I mean, this is all new to us, so...
Yeah, it's confusing. But I, I think the next right step, because I think I would wrestle with this one, because it doesn't benefit the neighborhood or the town.
To build, to build the cul-de-sac.
To build the cul-de-sac. But I think the next...
The waivers would benefit the town, Ian, and the owner.
Well, right, right. So, I think it's a matter of, you know, without spending a heck of a lot of your money, is to figure out about how much are you looking at for this, and determine, you know, do you want to just spend that and build it as-is, and we sign off on it? Or do you pursue waivers to save some money?
And to not saddle the neighborhood with 84 feet of pavement.
Right, when it could be all woods.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But the other thing is, I do think it's appropriate, and we just went through this with Orchard Place, that, you know, I think you probably should be looking to file a conventional plan, you know, actually go through the engineering of it, so that, you know, everything, that way, there's no, you know, insinuations, or no one can say anything about favoritism. Disclosure, we are classmates from high school, but we never dated.
Oh, so this is...
And that man is relieved. But, you know, at least that way, I mean, because I know Paige is uncomfortable sometimes with these sort of informal processes, and, you know, it's, we do represent the town, we don't want to give away the store.
Right, no, I know.
So I do think it would be appropriate to go through that motion, and that will cost you some bucks, but it will...
Yeah, that's okay.
It'll be a lot better than building a cul-de-sac. Yeah, that's kind of the litmus, litmus test we've been using with other people that coming in front of us. If you can prove to us you can build it conventionally, then we would entertain waivers. If you can't, right, we can entertain.
And that's what you saw with Orchard.
If you cannot prove that you can do it conventionally, then don't ask for waivers. It's kind of what we've been holding as a standard.
Right, right, right.
And by conventionally, you mean?
Without any waivers.
What is the actual road? What you've got right here is... On, on the second sheet. Appears to be conventional. So your engineer would do the full... Yeah, but we want to see the engineering.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
He would do the engineering, showing the width of the road, the length of the road, the width of the cul-de-sac.
Drainage.
The frontage, the drainage, and everything else, and then if it works, and you want to apply for the waivers, then we talk, and...
Okay.
Yep, we're glad to, if your engineer wants to reach out to us, we can show him. You know, we have numerous decisions.
And I think he was involved in a similar project, and that's why I chose him to be in this.
Well, his was a little different, that one was, was at the Walam, the...
Walamalapaw.
Yeah, that. I didn't want to say that publicly, because I always massacre it, but that was different too. So, but we can easily give him examples, and then that way, he can do the plans exactly to spec what we're used to seeing, and make sure we get it done in one night, or hopefully one night, not three.
One night?
Usually they're one night. Orchard Place was unique.
Three months.
So, you know, if you go the route and you come in front of waivers, it is helpful to have your neighbors come, like the neighbors come and speak.
Or, or at least speak to the neighbors ahead of time to explain to them what you're doing so that.
I have.
Because they will, they will receive a notification of the public hearing and, you know, if people don't communicate with their neighbors.
And they wonder what the heck's, what are they hiding?
And they get very uncomfortable.
It doesn't go well typically.
Yeah.
It sounds like you've covered a lot of your bases.
Yeah, well, I'm friendly with them. So, and I wanted to see if this was even viable for us. I mean, we had to walk the lot too.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
There's a lot of trees there to take down. It's a big tree lot. It's, it's big.
Yeah, it is. Well, we're glad you came in front of us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Take care. Have a great evening.
Okay, you guys are up next, accessory department. Come on up.
Okay. It being sometime past 7:15 PM, the public hearing for accessory apartment at 53 Cross Street by Sandra Myers.
Calabrese.
Sorry?
Calabrese.
Calabrese.
Not Myers anymore.
No.
Sorry.
That's what it says on my paper.
Sorry. I think, I think some of my paperwork says Myers and some says Calabrese. I've completely changed it, so.
Are you related to Rachel?
That's my sister-in-law.
Okay. Is this her old house?
Yes.
Okay. I'm very visual to the house. Thank you.
I, I don't know if you've seen it lately. It does not look anything like it.
It doesn't? Well, you're so far down. I run that street often, but I would never run.
I'm adding a farmer's porch and it's now tan, not red.
Okay. Well, if you see a random woman running down your driveway, you know it's me.
That's okay. Sometimes people like go down there not realizing.
It's a driveway.
Or people can't figure out what it is, like, or where I am.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Kari O'Landy and I'm a general contractor for Millbrook Modular Homes and the owner of the company, also a resident of Foxborough for over 30 years. I was glad to see that you approved that bakery. I keep thinking about lobster clause ever since you did.
You've got to write her an email.
She's still working on cannolis. I mean, you know.
Terrific.
Lobster clause are easier.
Yeah. So anyway, so I'm representing Sandra here in her addition. So she has an addition that she's, you have plans of as a breezeway. The focal point for her is that very large walk-in closet that she's added onto her house as well. And then she has an in-law on the second floor that's going to be, her, her mother's going to live there. And then we have a two-car garage underneath.
Okay. So I think the thing that struck those of us who saw this was your unusual access through your closet.
Because I'm not, I don't want to put anyone over there that I don't know. So if I have to get in there, like, it's not going to be for random people.
No, I understand.
So if like my, like, I'm hoping, because my dad passed on, so if she moves in there and I have to get in.
Yeah.
You're okay.
Don't have to be sorry. It's okay.
So it's for her mother and her father did pass away recently. And this is the purpose of what she wants to do. One of my co-pendants said that I should shrink this breezeway a little bit so that the walk-in closet wasn't so big. And I told him, that is the focal point of this whole building.
I can totally understand that.
Yep.
When do you think you're, if the project gets approved, when do you think you'll actually start doing it and when do you think it'll be completed?
We would start the project, I know there's a 21-day waiting period for the, you know, for the neighbors to respond if they wanted to. So we'd be starting the foundation probably right after that. This is scheduled to be a modular, so that it's scheduled right now to come in in February.
Okay. And I am sorry, I'm not familiar with how this sits on the lot.
Okay. It, it is adjacent to the existing house. To the left is the breezeway on the first floor, the walk-in closet on the second floor with a hallway that goes into the two-car garage. And then you have the in-law apartment on top and it's stay, it's with, it's 34 feet to the sideline, the setback, so it's well in the, in the setback. The property is three, almost three and a half acres.
Okay, that's.
Sits way back.
You can't even see the house from the view.
You might be able to see the garage from there.
Is there an issue with the entrance being in the closet?
No, it's just, it's just, it's, it's, it's one we've never seen before. It's not, there's nothing wrong with it.
If her mother irritates, she can throw in the closet.
Her mother's a lovely woman.
I know her mother.
Well, also Kevin, we were just saying too, is that the main access between the two units would be in the breezeway, right? I mean, that's, you know, you, the upstairs is kind of almost like, you know, if you're upstairs, like, but you, she could always go downstairs and go into the main part of your house.
Oh, yeah, there's going to be like a lock on my closet door. I don't want people coming into me.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm hoping, like, so at the moment, she's not like, I'm ready to move, but I.
You're planning.
Still trying to sit. So I don't know what the best way to go. And I'm already building it, so.
Yeah.
I have it if she, when she's ready.
Yeah, I did the same with my mom. And she said, I'm not ready, I'm not ready, I'm not ready. I said, well, I'm going to finish it. Pick the carpet color.
Basically, that's what I'm.
And then I walked in her house one day and she had fallen. She had a Band-Aid across her nose. I said, pat.
Yeah, at the moment, she's still doing good. She has great friends, but I'm like.
You're planning.
I'm preparing.
And it's a great thing.
She's never been on her own, so she's, I'm still kind of like, how are you doing?
Do you want me to help you? Do you want me to help you? I mean, I'm her landlord. I could tell her she's got to get out.
Then all of her friends might come after you.
I will not discuss this, but don't worry. You guys do whatever you're ready and whenever you're ready.
Well, and I just want to point out too, of our whole conversation on housing, I mean, this is, you know, an example of one of the things. We have a Foxborough family. We have a senior who I assume is in her own home. Is she living, your mom living alone?
She is right here.
Yeah, so she's in her home and, you know, she wants to.
Stay in town.
Be with family, stay in town and, you know.
My brother lives here.
Yeah.
I bought his house, so that's now on South Street and I bought his house on Cross Street, so.
Yeah. So that's, but, so that's the thing, you know, we're trying to, there's not a lot of places for seniors to go in Foxborough, you know, that it's unfortunately. So this is an example of family helping family and kind of what we're seeing more and more of as we all know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't.
And she, and she's social there. She has friends, so it may take her a while.
Well, I think if my dad was still alive, he would be like, no. I have more stories about him now. But, I mean, she has a real good, good group of friends. And right now she's still, you know, healthy, doing, playing cards and stuff like that.
Yeah, she is.
And I like to have her do that, but at night she is lonely. So I'm just trying to, making sure I have that because there might be someday where she's like, or she can't. So.
I don't know. You better be prepared to like let left, front and center, then you get right and center in your house.
I have to put in for a, for a clubhouse in my own house.
I have no questions or issues.
No, no, good. Me too.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Oh, you got to vote. It's a special permit. You got to vote.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the special permit for an accessory apartment at 53 Cross Street.
Second? We have to close the public hearing first?
The vote closes, the vote closes it. But you do have to do a roll call vote because it's a special permit.
Okay. So Gary, you seconded it?
I'll second it. Proves in favor?
No, we're going to do a roll call.
Okay. Jeff, aye. Ron, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye. How about it?
No, you're all set.
You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a nice evening.
So next steps is we have to have the decision signed and then file it with the town clerk. That'll start the 20-day appeal period. So we'd probably get the decision in, what, early next week?
Yeah.
Early next week, we'll get it to the town clerk. That'll start the 20-day appeal period.
I'll, I'll send you the, the decision with a letter explaining like the timeline of when the appeal period is over and when it has to be recorded with registration fees and then you can apply for your building permit.
Is it a problem that some of my, obviously some of the stuff in here still has Myers on it? Like legally, my name is Calabrese. Is that a problem?
I don't think so.
I don't know if I had to talk to somebody if that was necessary.
No, well, if you don't tell us. No, I just saw you. It was just printed that way there, so I addressed you that way. We'll address you as Calabrese from now on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My dad loves that.
Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Thank you. I'm dying to see it now.
What a tie. That'll be nice.
All right.
Kevin's rocking and rolling here.
I don't think I've ever seen Mr. Tam without a tie.
Well, I don't, you know, I don't want you guys to, you know, I don't want you guys to be misled that because we were so friendly to these other people, that your part tonight is going to go as smoothly as that.
I forgot to uncarving that, sorry. Okay. Brittany.
All right. It being on or about, 7:30 PM. Get a minor, an application for a minor modification to a site plan approval request from Gillette Stadium, Building P, Foxborough Realty Associates. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Wow, Woody, you're back.
I'm not the big guy.
Where have you been?
Good to see you all. I know. Been building a couple of things.
He's a busy boy. That's good.
I'm missing you guys.
Oh, I miss you.
How are we tonight?
Outstanding.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Outstanding. I like it.
For, for the record, Peter Tam on behalf of the Craft Group and Foxborough Realty Associates, Dan Krantz and Woody, Benis Akbeel on behalf of the Craft Group. This is, this evening, we appreciate taking a few minutes to just quickly summarize why we're here. This is a minor modification that we're seeking. Your board has a discretion, if you choose to exercise it, to grant a minor modification of the original stadium site plan approval from 2000. In this case, it's a replacement building. You may recall, we were before you in 2007 for a minor modification at, during the construction and development process for the new Hall of Fame, to construct a temporary fabric building to accommodate a bunch of uses, including the pro shop at that time. This new building, as Woody will show you, will replace that, what was intended always to be a temporary building. So there is some urgency to this new building because it involves football operations and office space. So Dan will walk you through quickly the purpose for the building and then turn it over to Woody to, to show you the plans.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Nice to be here.
Nice to see you.
So we are, as Peter said, it's, it's a single-story fabric structure right now. What we would like to be able to do is to add a four-story structure. The fourth floor would be a shelled floor. Floors two and three would be office floors and the first floor would be devoted to football. Tracy?
I can't envision where this is.
So if you go into our, Woody can show you.
Okay.
If you go into our E2 entrance.
Yep.
And E1, right there, right to your right is.
It's a fabric?
It's, 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 it's block up to about 12 feet and then it's a fabric roof.
Okay, I know where it is.
And, and it's right adjacent to the pro shop and Hall of Fame.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anyway, so what, as Woody gets out our rendering, so he's ready for his presentation. Really, this is about, football wants to expand some of their training and fitness areas. And this allows us to create a building so they can, it, it actually connects right directly to the football space. So football will be able to pick up about 25,000 square feet of, of additional training and fitness area. And it allows us to take some of the space currently within the stadium and give that to football as well. So again, the second floor and the third floor will be offices, fourth floor shelved, first floor football. I think the thing to remember is that it's really a reshuffling of the deck. We have no new employees with this. It's just moving them from one place to another. We have no traffic impacts because again, the same amount of people in, in the same space, just a bigger footprint. And the gate, the prime sport gate that is right adjacent to this building will operate just as it has for the last 20 years. We have premet with the department heads. They had just some minor comments and I believe Gabby's probably provided our responses to them in, in your package. We do have Brittany on the line via Zoom if we have any, any VHB technical site-related questions. But with that being said, in our crooked presentation.
It wasn't me. I was looking at him.
I know it's been a while, Woody, but.
No, really. I will turn it over to Woody that, that we walk you through our program here.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Can you hear me okay? Yeah, I don't know. I apologize if I'm repeating something you've already seen. I'll just try to run through it quickly, at least to give you a general sense of scope and location and get into a couple of details, but nothing crazy. So big picture, kind of old school, I assume the camera can see this.
Yep.
Northeast corner of the stadium ramp, right? For, for reference, obviously Patriot Place is here. Here's Route 1. The northeast ramp of the stadium and there's like little yellow boxes where the current building P is, as Dan spoke previously and Peter mentioned, built in 2007. So it's nestled right in adjacent to the northeast switchback ramp of the stadium. If you've come into a club event, there's the big glass enclosed escalator lobby, E1 on the east side, right next to our administrative offices. You'd walk right by this building if you were walking into the stadium. So just a little closer in view and giving a perspective of the new size of the building versus the existing. Again, for reference, folks, here's the northeast switchback ramp of the stadium. You can see the stadium seating bowl. This is the Hall of Fame, the round facade of the Hall of Fame. So the red outline shows you the extent perimeter of the proposed building footprint. And the white roof you're seeing here is the existing building P as it sits today.
Is where it connects in the lower right, the walkway that's in the photo?
Thank you. Yeah, good question. This corner right here, this is currently a driveway access point that gets to kind of the back door of football operations. And so the connection point to the stadium is here. There will be, it will be adjacent to that escalator lobby on this wall right here.
Okay.
We don't technically touch the stadium along this wall, but it is nestled right in against the, or just off of the northeast switchback ramp of the stadium. This is Brittany's prettier site plan. Again, just to give you again, a sense of finished product. Again, for reference, that's the connection point with the stadium proposed. And this corner here will be adjacent to the northeast, excuse me, the east club entrance. And again, for reference, the switchback ramp of the stadium and the Hall of Fame. The prime sports gate, as that had been a question, will stay as is. That is not really clearly depicted here, but the prime sports gate entry point is here and we just extend the front corner of Building P to be closer to the east road, which this generally depicts how the east road has been shifted east slightly. And it does not encroach the east club parking lot, but it does just sort of neck down the current landscape island ever so slightly.
I assume the fire chief and the police chief have looked at this and they're fine?
Yep.
And I've actually, I actually stood out there with Assistant Chief Buckley just to kind of walk and talk to give them a general sense of things as you were going through comments the last couple of weeks. So again, just a rendering to give you a sense of size and scale. This is placing you effectively in the corner of the east club parking lot, looking back up at the stadium. The lighthouse is just cut off of the view here and the pro shop and Hall of Fame would be to the right, just cut off of this view. But you can see the architect is suggesting very similar language. He'll be my architectural word of the day of glass glazing and kind of stacked sort of facade pieces to, again, sort of blend with the general stadium look. So it looks like it's supposed to be there while actually maintaining a pretty nice looking field.
I like the look of it.
I do too.
So are you actually going to bring people out from, that are in the stadium now and put them into this building? Is that what you're going to do?
Yes.
I think they're pretty crunched in there, aren't you?
So this is all Patriot personnel, this entire building, all the offices?
It's Craft Group, International Forest Products and football staff.
Okay.
There are a couple of floor plans, if you're interested. I mean, there's just showing kind of cube layouts and that kind of thing, but that, that's generally where it is and what it would look like.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as, as Dan mentioned, no change in use here, no increase in the intensity of use, no impact on stadium operations. I think the, the plan in terms of both sequencing, construction, as well as the future operation is going to be undertaken consistent with other projects in the course of, of stadium events. And to the, I think the one comment, substantive comment that Woody and Dan responded to from the building inspector, we're fully accepting of a condition to that effect if, if the board saw that to be appropriate. No new parking or, or traffic demands. It's utilizing existing infrastructure which is in place. Stormwater and, and water and wastewater can all be accommodated and, and that's reflected in, in the submission. So this is essentially a, a bigger, better building for what is there today, which was, this board did deem a minor modification back in 2007.
What's the timing you're thinking?
Now. We would like to, we, there's a component of the ground floor that we need to keep in place for football because football will use it for the duration of the season, but a portion of the building, we would like to demolish and start on a northern end. Our, our hope is, well, our, we will have the ground floor operational for football with a new virtual training room for the start of training camp next year. And then we look to have the second and third floors fit out by November 1st of 2022.
You have a steel, you have a steel thing, right? You need to order a steel?
We do need steel, as, as everybody I think is aware of, the construction trades problems with lead times and product availability. We are pushing very hard. We have actually worked to get a mill order ready to, to go so that we can have steel available first week in February, which would be the first time, we're hoping, that the football team would be out of the building.
Happen a little bit into February.
Well, that's what I mean, right after.
Yes.
Early February.
We'd like to play into.
They could be out of town.
Oh, they, they won't be playing at home though.
They don't.
So.
But don't jinx us. They're going to still be playing.
Okay. My, my, they will not be playing at home. So that, that's our hope, that in February we can start foundations and the steel will be there and we, we move on to a, a completion in the fall of 2022.
And so, so what are you going to do with the space within the stadium that's occupied now that you're going to free up?
A portion of it goes back to football. A portion of it goes back to football because, again, they're kind of reimagining the way they do a lot of things. So, they're going to take a pretty good amount of square footage on our existing ground floor, and then I think we will end up with some of our existing space on our administration level that will be just future growth because we're kind of tending in that direction, and we continue to put out these five-year plans and plan for what we think will be the growth, and we've always overgrew those plans. So, we're continuing to try to look to the future so that we have a place to put people if that opportunity exists.
And the people that we're removing from the current building P, there are a portion of people who are there today.
That are rolled back.
Taking them out as we rebuild this building, and they won't be moving back in. So, they'll, to your point about vacating some space within the stadium...
Yeah.
Those people will slide, kind of slide back in.
Repurposed into the existing space.
Gabby and Paige, any comments from any departments or boards?
I mean, Gabby handled that, but they worked through all of... We had a couple meetings and... Or one meeting and comments back and forth and worked through everything.
Yeah, yeah. Things were worked out. Okay.
Does this add tax revenue to the town, or is this part of the payment of taxes?
No.
No, it's not pilot.
Fair question. It's expected because this building will straddle both the stadium parcel and Foxborough Realty Associates property. It'll be either revenue neutral or revenue positive, and that's actually a consideration that is being discussed with town council and the administration right now.
Okay.
But, good question. The intent is that there are a number of benefits here for the town, obviously. Just the investment in football operations is obviously a direct benefit to the town because of, under the stadium lease, there is a ticket fee that's paid to the town. So, direct investment in the team means greater likelihood of success means presumably more tickets sold.
Yeah, but too bad that the payments per ticket don't reflect the increases in ticket costs. But that's on the town, not on you guys.
But also, the... Generally, this is consistent with this board and the master plan and the zoning's focus on real substantive investment in the EDA.
Yeah, I have...
So, Dan, just so I understand, after this year, none of the original building will remain inside, or you're not building around any of that?
That is correct. And Jeff, I'll say it'll be probably February by the time that building's completely demolished. But it is lock, stock, and barrel gone.
Yeah. And what is there now? Is it on a slab?
It is.
Yeah. What was Greed's famous comment there? How many minor modifications does it take before it becomes a major?
Oh, geez. That's because he's a curmudgeon. Funny one.
He's probably watching right now.
Love you. Do you want a motion?
Please.
All right. I make a motion to accept the minor modifications to the site plan approval request for Foxborough Realty Associates Gillette Stadium, Building P.
For a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Excellent job.
Nice to see you all.
We've missed you.
And, you know, if you want to come in next time, fix your collar, okay?
Did I go back?
Well...
See, and Brittany been here.
Brittany, you keep them in line.
Yeah, we need somebody.
Yeah, I can't go anywhere.
She's at home. She's a smart one.
Well, we didn't offer any baked goods, but next time it'll be Dan and Woody's Bakery Cafe.
I just can't believe you're here without a tie.
Yeah.
I'm still pre-Labor Day.
He's living vicariously through summer. Not giving it up.
Hey, clinging to it.
Don't forget your bag this time.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Oh, we've got to go over under on this.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you all.